We'll get started, we get the form. Let me have the roll call, please.
Chair Blair Sicklin.
Here.
Vice Chair Jean Enright.
Present.
Secretary Treasurer Wayne Richards, he is on his way. Commissioner Catherine Waldron, absent. Commissioner Joseph Anderson.
Present.
Executive Director Manuel Almira.
I'm here.
Court Counsel John Marrow.
Here.
We have a form.
All right, can we rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, additions, deletions, reorganizations of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, we would like to rearrange the agenda, and that is to take I-1 right after the approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, that's the lawyer.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, do we need a motion for that? B, not a motion to?
Yes, some move.
Some move. Commissioner Enright, we have a second. Commissioner Anderson, move the agenda. Second.
Oh, second.
Okay.
Oh.
All right.
I'm not doing anything.
No, no, we just have to move because the lawyers are here. They need to.
And we're moving then right after?
Consent, yeah.
Consent, okay.
Okay, all in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
Carries three zero, okay. So we need a motion approval of the agenda?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second. All in favor, all opposed, carries?
Aye.
Three zero, okay. Approval of minutes from the April, I guess from April 21st meeting? Motion?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Prove the minutes.
All right.
Second.
Second. All in favor, all opposed, carries three zero. Presentations and announcements?
No.
No? Okay, consent agenda, anybody have anything?
Yeah, I need, just wanted to ask a couple of questions.
Okay.
On G-1.
All right, go ahead.
My only, I was looking at the unaudited portion, which is, that basically tells us about our operation revenues, operation expenses, and after non-operation revenues. I noticed that we're like, when you look at the income loss before contributions, two hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty, let me see here, I put my spectacles on. Two hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five, and our net position is down to two hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five, and based on the current actual physical year, year-to-date, but then also too, I'm seeing that negative up under the variance of five oh two seventy, seventy-four. I know that we've had some things going on with the shipping and concerns, but I'm saying, is there anything on the horizon, would it affect our rating bonding, or what do we need to do on our side, because if we still keep, because it appears that maybe our expenses are rising higher than our revenue over time, what do we need to be doing on this end? Because when I look at that, that may be sounding a little some alarms. Am I correct, or is?
Michael Williams, Director of Finance, regarding your question, no. So here's what the port has done from a fiscal standpoint. We have made allowance for all potential bad debt from Teeters.
Okay.
And so we're in a position where we recognize all revenues that could potentially be uncollectible. So the financials you're seeing reflects, from an expenditure sense, standpoint, reflects the revenues written off, if you will.
Okay, yeah, all right.
But on a go-forward basis, there's no concerns unless there's other issues of the litigation that we're not aware of at this moment.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that update, that's all I have to say.
All right, for the record, Commissioner Richards has arrived.
Happy new.
All righty, so, anything else on the consent, if not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would ask that we remove one item and hear it separately. I have this same recurring conflict for the same entity, I have a G-12, berth one. So please remove that from the consent and handle that separately.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion to approve the consent minus G-12, and we'll do that separately. Commissioner Enright?
Yes.
Make a motion, you have a second. Commissioner Richards, second. All in favor, all opposed, carries four zero. Now we'll take G-12, First Amendment for berth one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll be abstaining from G-12.
All right, do we have a motion for G-12?
Some move, Mr. Chair, for G-12.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Anderson, all in favor, all opposed, carries three zero. Commissioner Richards abstaining. All right, now we're gonna take I-1.
Yes, yes, Commissioners, I'm gonna, in your materials today, you have a fairly detailed memorandum from me concerning the status of the two legal actions involving Teeters Agency and Monarch Shipping. And what I'd like to do today is give you a brief overview of where we are since we last met. As you recall, at the April 21st Commission meeting, you authorized counsel to move forward with filing legal actions against Teeters and Monarch Shipping. And on April 26, the Port of Palm Beach filed a complaint in Palm Beach County Circuit Court. The complaint has counts for eviction from the property, damages, unjust enrichment, and foreclosure of statutory liens. There are three separate agreements that we have with Teeters and Monarch that are involved. On May 5, we moved for a emergency injunction to stop defendants from removing property, valuable equipment, generators, forklifts, things of that nature. We became aware that was going on. We're also seeking return of the property that's been removed. We also filed for an injunction, emergency injunction, on May 6. The state court judge denied that and indicated, in his view, this was not an emergency. So that, that hearing has been rescheduled, and it's scheduled for Tuesday the 24th. We're still trying to negotiate with Teeters and Monarch. We're in regular contact with their counsel in an effort to kind of agree on a process forward to have them remove property from the site to recover our fees and damages and things of that nature. So that's a state court proceeding that's moving forward. At the same time, we file an action in federal court. Now this is essentially an admiralty-based action, so that's why it was filed in federal district court rather than state court. That action was filed on April 28, 2022. There was already a lubricant, SSL lubricant, filed a complaint against Monarch to recover some monies that they were owed. We intervened in that action. Last week, the federal court judge, at the request of the port, entered orders formally arresting the Monarch and appointing the port as a substitute custodian. Today, we filed in federal district court a motion seeking an expedited sale of the vessel. We have retained an individual to come and assess the value of the vessel. I don't know, has he come?
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, so that, that individual has already made an assessment of the vessel, and it's pretty much gonna be scrap value. And the US Coast Guard has made it very clear that they want that vessel moved out as soon as possible, certainly before the start of hurricane season, for a variety of reasons. We too want to get that vessel out of the way as soon as possible. Again, we've been trying to work with the Teeters attorney, they've talked about a potential foreign buyer. They represented some values regarding the vessels, we don't believe those are valid. We asked for the underlying documentation, we have still not received that from them. There is a potential for a private sale, although if you were to ask my opinion at this point in time, I think it's unlikely, but we'll keep the door open on that. With respect to the vehicles and cargo, I'm sure you've read some articles in the Post about this. The port has really done an exceptional job, I have to say. I want to make it clear here that the port really has no obligation to assist the individuals that have been impacted and defrauded by Teeters, but in the interest of doing the right thing, the port has really stepped up and tried to work with all the individuals that are trying to recover their vehicles, and a great deal of progress has been made. And I don't know, Manny, if you wanna talk a little bit about?
I will, I'll be a second.
Okay, so he's gonna talk about that. An impressive amount of progress has been made in that regard about returning the vehicles and cargo to these individuals. I went out to the site a few weeks ago, I mean, you pull up and there's a dozen people there trying to figure out what's going on and asking, you know, who are you, can you help me? And we have security personnel at the site that are fluent and Creole, so we're doing the best we can to communicate with these folks. But, as you might imagine, when you have so many cars in one area, and somebody says, well, my car is, you know, the blue Buick there in the middle, sometimes you can have to remove dozens of cars to get to just one car. That could be a multi-hour process. So we're trying to do this in some orderly fashion. You know, we have a helpline that's been set up by our PIO office, so, you know, we're hopeful that that's gonna be continuing to move along nicely. We've also, on May 13, we've made a claim on two bonds on the property, and we're still working with International Fidelity Insurance Company on those claims, on the bonds. That's again, a very kind of brief overview of the state court and federal district court action. There's more detail in the memorandum you have in your notebook, and I'm happy to address any questions that the commission might have.
We know that it's kind of a sensitive matter, and most of us realize that if we need any other information, we can call you or the executive director, and we appreciate the job you're doing, and I think the port's doing a heck of a good job trying to, you know, help all these people that have basically have their cars, unfortunately, because of what's happened in Haiti, just stuck here, so, thank you very much for that report. Manny?
Sure. Executive report.
Executive report.
Manny, there's a motion. John, there's a motion for your I-1?
I'm sorry?
There's a motion you're requesting?
No. I don't.
Would request us to rearrange the agenda?
Yeah.
Can you just give an explanation?
There's a motion.
Oh, this is on a, and so, yeah, this is on an invitation to bid and contract award to remove the Monarch vessel. I don't know who has the backup.
Keltis.
I don't have that.
So now that we have custody of the vessel, again, number one priority is to get it out of here and go for an expedited sale.
So we need a motion for you to go out and get bids or whatever?
A bid to remove the vehicle, yes.
Do we have a motion for that?
Some move.
Commissioner Richards, second. Commissioner Enright, any discussion, we all kind of think the sooner the better. So all in favor, all opposed, carries four zero. Very good. Anything else? Good? Okay.
All right, now, Commissioners, moving on, something that John mentioned. We are getting an awful amount of phone calls from interested parties, not only on the land that Teeters wants leased, but also on the ship. And as John mentioned, we will not turn anybody down, of course, if they're interested in buying the ship, so be it. I can tell you this, a neighbor of mine who happens to be in the business told me that today, the value of scrap is about $250 a ton. We're looking somewhere north of a half a million dollars for the ship the way it is, but we have to first get it there. So that's about another 150, 175,000. So just please keep that in mind. Now, as I mentioned before, there's a lot of interest, not only from the outsiders, and believe me when I tell you, we are getting one or two calls a day, the social interest within. There are interested parties internally that would like to take over the lease, the land lease. So with that, I felt it'd be best for all of us to understand the process, portland management, as I call it. Traditionally, landlord ports only enter into long-term land with carriers that can guarantee large tonnage or large number of vehicles in exchange for economic incentives. As an example, Tropical Shipping has a five-year land lease, but they've also pledged 1,330,000 tons, minimum. If there's a shortfall, they will pay for that particular shortfall. On the other hand, stevedores and cargo handlers, they do have the ability to lease land. They handle and coordinate the vessel activities in those lands, but the way that goes about it is, we give them a short-term lease, so that in 45 days, and it's a series of three, so it's 45, 45, and 45. At the end of that term, then we can assess whether they are meeting the, our terms. Obviously, if they don't pay, then we have the ability to take that land back. So I only mention this because it seems to be a tremendous amount of interest. One way that I am considering would be to possibly put an RFP out there to see who can give us the highest and best use for this particular land. We're talking about 2.5 acres. Now, to the normal port, 2.5 acres is not much to dream about or talk about, but in our case, it certainly is. So I am working to get everything prepared, but first thing first, as John mentioned, we need to get that ship out of here, and June is a week and a half away, and that's when the hurricane season begins. So that's where we are with the portland management. Moving on a little bit, the?
Excuse me, just.
Go ahead, Jim.
I just had a one question. So if the event that we go down the road for issuing an RFP or an RFQ, does that preclude stevedores or any of those individuals that want to diversify their portfolio in order to collaborate and bring in businesses that may do import, export? Would that exclude some of our existing tenants from participating?
Not the way the RFP would be, would be written. In other words, I want the best and highest use of that land. It could be a stevedore company, sure, it could be a steamship line, it could be a project cargo. So it's all on how it's written and what type of responses we get. And then I'll assign our staff to look at it, analyze it, particularly our finance folks, and then come up with a solution which will be presented to the board, and they'll be able to, at that point, either agree with our choice or have choices of your own.
And also, can you just, when you get at your leisure, if you're able to forward me the current lease agreements that we currently have for Teeters?
Teeters?
For that particular parcel of land?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I want to make sure that the five of us have the ability to look at it RFP closely before we.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, we're gonna all, you know, this is kind of a big deal, so we're not gonna be rushing to just, this is, you know, so this will take some time. Of course, we gotta get the land vacant first, so.
Right.
That was, that was gonna be my statement to John. First, we need to get everything cleared legally out of the way, so then we'll be able to sort of look for.
Absolutely.
That doesn't preclude us from starting to do?
Yeah, no, no, we could talk, but we can't really do anything until everything's gone, so.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say, we also need to take into consideration the size of the different companies, because if they're small companies, and how much tonnage and how much they're gonna bring in a year, because 1.2 acres might not seem like a little, but with some businesses and tenants, we might be able to get $4 million. And with other people, we might not be able to get $2 million. So we really got to take a good look at this, because we're in a different time and a different age, and then I am really opposed to all these three 30-year leases and all of this stuff, so we're gonna have to look at our master plan and longevity and how we plan to go along, so.
Sure, all that will be taken in consideration.
Okay, next, Danny.
All right, moving on to webpage and master plan, this month, we launched a master plan website to help promote participation from stakeholders and the public. You can see, I don't yet, you can see the page on your screen through the project website and community, you can learn more about the project, participate in the short survey on the port's role in the community, attend online live streaming portion of the hybrid public meetings, and sign up for the project email blast. Public meetings for the first public engagement period are scheduled for Wednesday, June 1, between the hours of 11:00 and 1:00 PM here in our boardroom, and the second would be the following day, June 2, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Riviera Beach Marina Event Center. Each public meeting session will provide the same presentation, offer several opportunities for the public to attend. The meeting will be recorded and available for viewing on the project's website, which is plantportofpalmbeach.com. Port staff has spent the last two weeks participating in intergovernmental agency meetings to discuss ports, master plan, project.
Good.
Moving on on audio, as requested, we have started to publish audio recordings of our board meeting on our port website and a new website under the Commissioners tab, Commissioners tab. The audio for the April meeting has been online for weeks now. Where we forward, the audio recording for future meetings will be available no more than 24 hours after the meeting. A subject that is dear to all of us is rush hour relief. The morning train for the FEC railroad has been arriving earlier, allowing area residents and port staff to breathe a sigh of relief. The earlier arrival is the result of an agreement between Tropical Shipping, a major tenant of the Port of Palm Beach, and the FEC. We will continue to work with the appropriate government and transportation agencies to establish a long-term solution. This will definitely improve public safety. And Commissioners, last on this topic, you will, you may have noticed or seen that the Palm Beach Post and Channel 5 reported on their collaborative effort to alleviate the traffic and public safety concerns around the FEC train schedule. We distributed a new joint release with the city to highlight the earlier arrival time. Last but not least, of course, is the schedule, the AAPA and the Florida Port Council, AAPA will have a shifting of trade, which normally takes place in January, this time around is delaying it until June. Also, the Port Security Seminar in San Diego, the Florida Port Council Break Bulk America 2022 Conference in Houston, and last, the AAPA 111th Annual Convention Expo in Orlando.
Great, okay.
I have one, one question.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you know how many vehicles have been returned as of today?
Give you a real close approximation, slightly more than 500, slightly.
And just to switch gears here, being that we uploaded the minutes via audio, in the event, because we have quite a bit of seniors within our port district, especially in the Three Sisters, Golden Lake, Cypress Lake, Century Village, and in various cities in the Glades area and Riviera Beach, where they don't have access to internet or don't, they don't provide those services, are they able to come to the port, are we able to provide a jump drive or anything?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good, okay, Port Engineer.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and yes, it's a time, I'll be brief. I did want to update you on the port dredging project. This year's Port of Palm Beach dredge event has been completed. The final volumes were slightly over 300,000 cubic yards, making it a very successful start to emptying the settling basins. Unfortunately, weather delayed the dredge quite often, or we would have reached probably 400,000 yards. The most exciting progress on this work is the fact that we have already received authorization and funding for another major dredge event next year. This project could result in the removal of the remaining sand in the extended settling basin, which puts us well on track to scheduled dredge events and minimize emergency events with the resulting draft restrictions in the future. Unrelated topic, I didn't go into a US Army Corps of Engineers Outreach Meeting, where I traveled up to the Corps of Engineers office. I was graciously met with a wide group of people from the Corps of Engineers, and we were able to discuss many things, including dredging. We discussed the berth one project and the permits on that. We also discussed the Grupo Mexico project for rail-to-ship operations in the future. That meeting was so successful that a five-person contingent visited with us today to discuss both those projects, and they wanted to see the area in person. We took, we look forward to seeing how this collaboration can accelerate the permitting of berth one, which should be fairly easy from this point forward, and also accelerate the rail-to-ship operation. It certainly shows us the importance of maintaining a close working relationship with the US Army Corps of Engineers. And I'll end it with that, you can read some of the other issues.
Thank you very much. Government affairs, I don't assume we have anything on government since there's nothing going on, but Mr. Pitsky's here, and there he is, the one and only.
Answer any questions.
No, no, just sit there.
Their suite will be all the action.
Hot next, okay, that's right, that's right. All right, Commission reports, Commissioner Enright, anything?
Yeah.
Commissioner Richards? Commissioner Anderson, nothing, nothing at all, very good. New business, no new business, right, Mr. Marrow?
That is correct, no new business.
Comments from the public?
I-2.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we gotta do that. I-2, before we get to new business, which we don't have any, Maritime Office Complex, standby power, that's important.
You'll like this one, this is part of the, this is part of the project to provide the facility adjustments necessary to the CBP DHS offices to make this a command center. We've previously authorized EC Finell to take a look at what we can do with power, so I'll just get to the best part, the financial impact. This project is 100% reimbursed by the Corps, by CBP DHS. So all we're asking for is a request of permission for me to issue a request or proposal for a contract to hook up this power as it was designed by EC.
Some move. Okay, Commissioner Richards?
Second.
Commissioner Enright, second, any other discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries four zero. Okay, now, no new business, correct, Manny?
Correct.
No comments from the public today? Comments from the Commissioners? Commissioner Enright?
I'm not sure.
Our esteemed ED will be leaving us in 12 to 13 months. We need to, this board is responsible to find a replacement, so we need to start talking about it and thinking about it. So maybe at the next month's meeting, we should have an item, or we need to start addressing it.
Right, I've already talked to the executive director.
I have as well, but.
I know, so we, I know, but everyone, any board member, give them a call if you have any ideas, but yeah, we've talked about it quite a.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just.
Okay.
I also talked to Mr. Marrow about bringing a couple other employees at high-level positions, so you can train them, so where are you now with that? Can you elaborate for me, please?
As far as, well, my biggest surprise, Commissioners, is the salaries, the level that some of these candidates are requesting. So the one individual, I was shocked to hear that he's up in 300,000.
Oh, no.
I know, so now you know where I'm at, and let me continue working on it.
Yeah, we'll go over this, we don't need a piecemeal of it right now.
Correct, but I also, I also don't want us to piecemeal it next month or.
No, 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 we're working on it.
But is the process, we talked to Manny one-on-one, and he finds somebody? Do we want to have a search? We don't have to answer it today, but we have to be organized as to how we move forward.
No.
I was not talking about the executive director, I was talking about other employees.
I was talking about other employees.
But it all goes together, so it's.
Right, but other employees can be something separate, because he will hire those individuals. And like Commissioner Richards said, yes, because years ago, we had a process, so we need to come decide how we're going to do this way in advance than last year. I concur with you.
Right. We've already, the director and myself have already started a process, but everyone's going to obviously get in the thing, and if you have any specific questions, call the director, but then definitely at a meeting. We do have one comment by the public, Joe Dias, I think.
I just wanted to bring out something to your attention about the land lease idea going on.
Could you say who you, who are, who you work for or for you?
I'm Joe Dias from Heavy Lift Services, your second oldest tenant in the Port of Palm Beach. You have a couple companies here that lease land for long-term amounts of time without any tonnage or warfage guarantees, those being Chaney Brothers, Merchants Export, and Resolve. They don't have any tonnage, warfage guarantees at all. They lease land for long periods of time, no guarantees. So I just wanted to point that out. That's all.
Okay, well, we appreciate it, and we heard what we said, that it's not, we're not, so on, anyone has a fair opportunity, and so, you know, get with our staff and make, if you have a proposal, we're certainly not going to shut you down, and we appreciate. What generation are you?
Third.
Third?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's Glenn's son.
Glenn's son, okay. I've never met you.
Yeah, Tina.
Okay, good. Well, nice meeting you, and thanks for coming.
Yep.
All right.
So, so, so two seconds. So the issue is, and we're not going to beat it up now, but the issue is, and that's why Manny put the comments on the screen, it's his position and possibly others in the industry that stevedores don't get the leases. So he's letting us know there are two or three tenants here that do have long-term leases that do not have minimums. So that's what's happening.
Right.
There's a discussion going back and forth.
Right.
Yeah.
Because we have to look at the money. The bottom line is.
Everything's on the table.
Everything.
And I just, Mr. Chair, if I can, and you, and your company has been here for how many years?
57.
57 years?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much. All right. Any other, Joe, do you have anything?
Yes, I got a couple of comments. One was, I don't think, Commissioner, but I am definitely in agreeance that we need to have a succinct, especially meticulous and methodical succession plan in how we're going to reach that next executive director. And I don't think Mr. Richards was here when the conversation was had about our executive director hiring two individuals, two deputy executive directors. I know that was mentioned by a couple of the board members, so I'm in agreeance with Commissioner Richards in having a more succinct succession plan and how we get there. Number two is, do we have a maintenance agreement or longevity on certain buildings that are owned by the port that we lease to our tenants? And whether or not some of those buildings have outlived their useful life or what repairs that are needed? Have we, do we have something in the works or documentation to that point?
Commissioner, if I think I know which warehouse you're referring to, the current tenant signed a contract letting him know that he is responsible for the maintenance of that particular building.
No, I'm talking about all buildings.
Well, all buildings, just us. We.
So there's no other building that's on the port property or premises that we own but lease to tenants?
Well, merchants is one, of course.
I'm just, I'm just saying in general.
Yeah, it's, those are the ones.
So that's the only one that we own?
Merchants we own, that is correct, yes. Not the.
So there's no other?
Well, that's what I mentioned, 11 and 12.
No other warehouses?
No, no, 11 and 12, Warehouse 11 and Warehouse Number 12 is owned by the port, and when we leased those land, and we have the lease in my desk, it's clearly specified that the tenant is supposed to take care of that building, and that has been addressed. However, given the condition of those buildings, it'd be best to demolish and start all over again. In other words, relocate those buildings. And that is part of that master plan that we would like to put forth, is to not only relocate but build new warehouses away from where they're located right now, so we can always use the.
Where, could you point to where that is?
Yeah.
I'm a little confused.
Right there. In reference to these two, these three buildings are ours.
Right.
This building is, this one has come down, and this one definitely has come down. Half of this is house, that's the, our main shot. The idea that we're presenting to the master plans is either take them and build warehouses down here and leaving the footprint behind, or we already started to purchase, maybe build warehouses up here. We don't know yet. We're still in the process of plenty, and there we are.
And what is the, our building that we currently own that's by the south gate, what is the condition of that? I know that's a newer.
This one?
Yes.
It's workable. We keep fixing it. There's been some leakage, there's been some drainage problems, we're the process of clarifying or making the drainage problem go away. It's, it's got some life in it, you know, but this, this really not a big push to do anything about it yet. It is still fixed. The one certain problem is on these three warehouses.
And those, if I can make, those first two, I remember four, five, six years ago, they were in very poor condition. So, yeah, there've been a few bandings put on them the last two or three years.
If you recall, you replaced the roof.
Yeah.
We done somewhere inside, and we noted, noticed to the tenant, before he went, he moved on to the bigger one, he mentioned the conditions here are such, you're taking it as is.
Right.
So the thought process is down the road, something will be done. What that is, we don't know yet, and how much, we don't know yet.
That's all included in the master plan.
That's part of.
So any commissioners have any thoughts? They talked to our staff, master plan?
I'll definitely follow up, because my concern is if, you know, you know, we're the Port of Palm Beach, and we have to be cognizant of the buildings that we're leasing from a liability standpoint and also from a functionality and making sure that, you know, liability, because I know some of our leases might end at the door, and then it might expand onto the dock, the relish and whatnot. So the safety is a concern, as well as the efficiency and effectiveness, and then, you know, you don't want to charge individuals for dilapidated conditions. I know I wouldn't, and as a port commissioner sitting on this day, I don't think that's acceptable. But if you can forward me that information, then I'll touch bases with you offline. But thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. One little thing.
One little thing. We had mentioned this before, and I concur with Commissioner Richards, but just keep in mind that the executive director, we will come up with a process, but we will not select that person until next year, and interviews will be held next year. So just keep that in mind, but we do have to have a plan of doing it. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next meeting will be June 16th at 4:00. Good? All right, merger.